Public meeting to order, please stand for the saying the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
At this time, we'll call for a moment of silence for those that lost their lives in the school shooting in Uvalde, Texas. Our thoughts and prayers grow out to the victims and their families. Thank you. I'm going to turn it over to the superintendent for our retirement reception and recognition.
Thank you. Tonight's a really special night. We don't have crowds like this often, and this is a really special occasion for everyone. I mean, we get cake and cookies and whatever's left, we give it to them. The individuals in this room who have served this district with such dedication have an opportunity tonight to be recognized by my Board of Education and by all the people who love them and who join them today in this room. I want to thank you for the care that you've given to our students, that you've given to their families. In this room, we're going to recognize approximately seven retirees tonight. However, this year, there have been 20 individuals who have retired from our district with a grand total of 454 years of service to the students of our district. 450 years. It's just awesome. And tonight, we have the opportunity to celebrate them with all of you. So I will be turning it over to a number of different people this evening. After the individual is recognized, we then have an apple for them that they can take with them into retirement. So I will first call up Ms. Liz Wery.
Thank you so much. It's a true honor to be here today, and I want to recognize everyone who's receiving tenure tonight and all of our retirees. Congratulations. And at the bottom of my heart, thank you for all you've done for the district. So I'm going to call Crystal Justiana Riddle. I've just left to know Crystal for a long time. It started in the 90s. People were to the 90s because we actually worked together in the 80s. Never did I think in my life that we would be working together in the same school. And we've been at that for the past 32 years. So thank you. Thank you for being dedicated, being such a strong role model for students, being there every day. And I actually have a timer because I got like time sure does fly. Crystal and I started, as they said, in the 90s. She actually worked at the middle school with three years and one herself, or two years. And then she decided, oh, I'm going to go to Las Vegas because they're hiring. And I remember it was like a phone conference, a phone interview, and she was off. She was off to Las Vegas. I was at Military Road at that time. And then she came back. She had a phone call, Chuck Toretta called, and she came back to Weefield and interviewed and started at Tuscarora School. So while she was at Tuscarora School, she taught second and third grade for 10 years. Amazing job. She loved that grade level. But she loves change. So she went to sixth grade. She was like, you know what? And she was always, she had a love for math and science as well. So she wanted sixth grade. She spent 14 years in fifth grade, many times going to Fletcher, camping, a lot of memories there, a lot of stories. Then the specialist position came to be. She wanted to learn more. She was great in math. She took that position, went for professional development, colleagues, you know, collaborated with all of her math colleagues and generalized and did an amazing job in math. And it was actually great because she loves to, she's like a born actress as well. She comes to school as an actress every day. So she loved being in a little, you know, little classroom. And even when we got our smartphone, she was the first one to record videos. And I believe boys were in many of those videos, right, with math? And yes. So she was great during that pandemic part of her life. And she's done top of her, which she was passionate about. And now she's back in on math specialists. And we're just building in for the district 32 years, right? So for the past six years, math specialist. So thank you. In 1995, this is a great story, while at Tuscarora School, we were relocating to Colonial Village. And everyone was kind of upset about that because of their instructions. But she was the yappy teacher around. And that's where she met her husband, Jim Liddell. It was destiny that Crystal was over at Colonial Village. And then throughout her career, her sons, Matt and Joe, that was so supportive of Jim. So we have many, last many memories. Elder's Day, Halloween party, Fletcher, it's been great. And not only is Crystal so much fun, but we all agree Crystal was a caring teacher, a mentor to new teachers, a comedian, a baker, a nail stylist, and since she's been in math position, well, retirement financial advisor. So thank you for leading our sunshine committee and all the committees that you've served on for being part of our Tuscarora family and for your kindness and dedication to the students and families through the past 30 years plus. Couple things from students of sixth grade. One student said that you're very funny and you make everyone yappy. Another one said you were the kindest teacher. A third one said, you're pretty smart, wise, and she loves how you dress. Another one said you're really bright and jolly. And finally, you're very calm. And just awesome. So may you be proud of the work you've done, the person you are, and the difference you will make. Happy retirement. I wish you great health and good luck. And I know the best part would be sending kind of a picture.
All right. So Lynn has taught, first of all, Lynn Fredericks, and Lynn has taught Eric Road students in grades K through five for the past 22 years. Prior to teaching, she served in the Army Military Police for three years. After that, she had her son Nicholas and went to college to teach music, leading her to eventually Niagara Weefield. She had a few short jobs in some private schools in the area, but then ended up here. I've known Lynn for 18 years, mostly as her principal. Her classroom is always filled with sound and movement. Students are often singing, dancing, and playing various instruments as accompaniment. Sometimes the students leave the music room with the same level of workout that they get in PE. Students in Lynn's classroom don't just learn about music, they embrace it and they perform. In addition to teaching general music, Lynn has directed the chorus program for students in grades three through five during her time at Eric Road. And every year, the choruses impress their audience of parents, staff, and fellow students. Many of our young singers continue to flourish in our music program at the middle school and at the high school as Lynn has helped them find their passion for music. Speaking of passion for music, Lynn is a vocal performer herself, particularly in the genre of jazz and blues. As a farewell gift to our fifth graders each year, she sings "America the Beautiful" at our fifth grade promotion. She also performs locally in the Western New York community outside of school as music is just a part of who she is. Lynn has certainly left her mark in Niagara Weefield, and we wish her all the best in retirement, and we know she will never stop singing.
And I can just tell you that no one escapes your infectious personality. When you walk into your classroom, if I stop by, everybody has to move. It's really cool.
I have to hold the mic. I'm Eleanor Payne. You know, as you know, actually, I'm completing my six months, and I'm very saddened at the fact that as I'm reading all the things that everyone has said about you, I'm so sad that I wasn't there longer to get to know you. She has been with the district for over 22 years and has worked with our most neediest groups of her students with disabilities. And the words that keep coming out is her compassion, your commitment, and just how you care. And so that really has been one of those pieces that I wish I would have known you longer in that, but you have left a lasting impression in the colleagues that you are with. A few things too, is that Susan is a gemologist. Fancy word. She helped also run her husband's, late husband's business as well, is a mom, a dog mom. So you have many other vast pieces. In her time at Niagara Weefield, she also took in some of our students abroad. And to this day, you have lasting impacts on those students that were with you. It is, you know, one of the things that really struck to me is some of those final ending sentences that said, Niagara Weefield was privileged to have Susan as an employee for over two decades. Her presence in the building will certainly be missed. And I know, although we never had that moment together, it is something that I know from the heartfelt of the students and of the staff that you are truly a gem. Kathleen. Kathleen, the same sentiments I have for you. Kathleen actually has spent a great majority of her career at Colonial Village. So I reached out to, I reached out to Marissa, and I said, you know, I'm at a loss of words. What can you tell me about this person? And one of those other pieces too, that came out was your dedication, how you were dedicated. Now, she was the library aide, and she kept things, you know, she knew where things were. She knew how, you know, where kids were going. But the other thing too is the connection that you had with the students in that building. And Marissa just gleamed, and so did some of the staffs when they came to. And I said, well, throw me some adjectives. You know, tell me about her. And once again, they're like, your commitment, the way that you connected with students, and also the way that you were organized. Because being in the library, you'd need to do that. And I asked in the middle school, because I know you were there for about two months, I said, please tell me something about it. She said that you are sweet, and you were excellent with students. You formed great relationships with them, and they respected you. And that's something that goes a long way. You had a calm demeanor, which made everyone feel safe around her. And it says, and also from CD, she was kind, patient, and you were committed and dedicated to our community. So thank you so much for all your time. 19 years. Always smiling. I'm not sure if Joanne is here. All right. Thank you.
Good evening. We have two folks from the high school here this evening. First, Pam Pies. Come on up, Pam. The first thing, I think you'll notice, oh, it's gone. Pam did have a tissue in her hand when she first got here. And she told, oh, she still has it. And she told me this wasn't going to be a very emotional evening. She had it under control. But the mist on her face, she tells me, was from chopping onions before she came this evening. So we're going to go with that. Pam has been at the high school for 23 years. She's been a monitor in our building, one of the most difficult jobs anyone could assume with high school students. To command the respect of young men that stand three or four feet taller than you is quite a task. She performed in that job admirably. And as always, when you do this type of thing, ask those folks that you work most closely with, share some stories. What can we say about Pam when she comes up this evening? But I can tell you that all those folks that you worked with enjoy being with you. We love you and respect you, and everybody you've worked with feels the same way. Thank you for your time at the high school. Julia Coiza. Julia has also been at the high school for 23 years. Speaking, reading, writing, and listening, 30 years. And you guys lied to me. 30 years. And at some point, reading, writing, speaking, and listening is very difficult. Reading, writing, speaking, and listening in a foreign language is even more difficult. But then being able to speak and teach, reading, writing, and listening in a foreign language is insurmontably even more difficult. For 30 years, she's taught French to students in this high school. They have performed admirably, scored well in recent exams, earned seals of bilinguality. Her work ethic is amazing, and her students perform very, very well. I'm going to get out of the way because the members of your department have a song and dance prepared, and they want to share that with everyone.
Good evening, and thank you for the opportunity to share with you a bit of information about our very own Julia. Julia's 30-year tenure of teaching French here at the high school will sadly for us come to a close in a few short weeks. It seems like just yesterday when we became our team. Julia is a consummate professional who has dedicated her life to teaching her students to love everything French. She has always created interesting lessons with her students, learning styles and strengths in mind. For our department, she has been a pillar of talent, and her knowledge of second language methodology is second to none. Julia is the second language phenom of the world language department, and has been a wonderful resource for all of us. She fluently speaks, reads and writes Italian, French, and Spanish. Of course, English sometimes a bit. The other three are better than her English. She truly is a gifted linguist. For those of you who don't, who may not be familiar with the high school, the teachers of French and Spanish and Tuscarora languages are strategically located in what is known as the Language Loft upstairs. The loft is a cultural haven where constant talking, laughing, sometimes crying can be heard by not only our students, but by us. Many times where there is one, the others will be there as well, having an impromptu morning meeting to catch up on what's happened in the past 15 hours that we haven't seen each other. We really and truly enjoy one another. We share annual summertime lunches and Christmas time dinners. We have been fortunate to share the joys. I can't believe I'm doing this, Julia. I'm getting a little teary eyed here. The verse of our children and so many of their accomplishments and the sorrows of losing parents and loved ones and everything in between. We've shared magical times dressing up as 80s rock stars singing "Girls Just Want to Have Fun" at the High School Talent Show a few years ago, and dancing to a choreographed number to Walk This Way at a Fall Peppery. That was a spectacle. And who could forget our after-school workout sessions when we were wearing masks, trying to get in shape after baking all those, you know, breads and muffins and things. We have had such wonderful times. It's funny because the seven of us, we have a few that are missing here, but the seven of us come from various cultural backgrounds, work and life experiences. We're in different stages of our lives personally, yet we really are family. We're sisters. We were meant to be together from the get-go, and you have been and will always be a special part of our lives. Julia, your retirement is going to throw off our mojo in the low loft, seriously, but we couldn't be happier for you. We will miss your calm. She's so calm. Your humor, your concern, your love that you've shown each of us and each of your students all these years. So you're going to move on to this next phase of your journey. Enjoy with your beautiful family, husband Etienne, your son Stephen and Michael, and your recently married daughter Carol, and your new son-in-law Matt. Her rescues Dante and Ellie. Ellie will love having you home full-time with them as well. So we love you, Julia. We will miss you like crazy. Thank you for the memories. Bon chance. I hope I said that properly. Buena fortuna, buena suerte, y que Dios te bendiga para siempre.
If I could just ask our retirees to stand one more time for a nice round of applause. Well, as we make a little transition here from the individuals who have dedicated so many incredible years to our district, we're now going to just take a moment to recognize those who the Board of Education will be considering for tenure this evening. They're at the beginning of their careers here in Niagara Weefield. I'm going to ask them to all stand so we can recognize them. Alexander Gagne. Very excited about the work all of you have done so far, and even more excited about the work that you'll do in the future. Still me, right, Mr.?
That's still you. You've got two more things.
I have an opportunity early next week to honor our board liaison, our student board liaison. And I have to tell you, every year, it is a great honor to recognize our liaison, and this year is no different. Annie Rick has really embodied what a student liaison should be. She represented the student body by listening to the thoughts and perspectives of her peers, providing the student perspective to the Board of Education, and listening and asking great questions. And I will tell you, those who have filled this role like Annie over the last couple of years, it's been an incredibly big time to come to board meetings and share the student perspective, and she's done admirably. Annie attended almost every meeting and was often running in from one co-curricular activity or another, just to make our meetings on time. She's very dedicated to everything she does, and this is just one of the many things that Annie does. As a leader, she understood the importance of giving her time, and she did so understanding that it had a great impact on our group. Because as board members and as some of the educational leaders in the district, especially in district office, this is our opportunity early to get the student perspective on a regular basis. I, again, will have an opportunity to present a certificate to you and to show you a plaque that will forever have your name on it at the Senior Awards Night coming up. So I want to thank everybody for congratulating Annie Rick with me tonight.
All right. So we have a family support center and fucking food mart and caring closet update. Kara Kirk and Darla Boobar.
Very much. Darla did have to leave unexpectedly, so I'm on my own tonight. So congratulations to everyone on your tenure. Thank you for allowing me to speak for a few minutes tonight. I'm here on behalf of the Family Support Center as well as the Social Justice Committee of the Niagara Weefield Teachers Association. And I'm here to provide you with some exciting updates on our initiatives to help our families meet their basic needs. As you all know, the Caring Closet Initiative began last winter as a project of the Social Justice Committee to provide free hygiene products for end-own families in need. Hoping that we could sustain that for the long term, we solicited the help of our teachers' union members and began collecting products to donate back to families. The Caring Closet has been extremely successful, and we have distributed over 600 hygiene items since the start of this school year. And we've been able to receive donations as well from United Way, as well as other members of our different bargaining units. Through our partnership with Feed More Western New York, our food pantry at the high school and the middle school and the backpack programs at Tuscarora and Colonial Village have been extremely successful and helpful to our families. Since December, the food pantry has served over 87 households and 375 individuals, providing them with non-perishable groceries. The backpack program provides weekend food for approximately 60 students. And our efforts to supplement the cupboards of our families will improve soon as we've been able to secure a freezer from Feed More Western New York, so we can also start providing some perishable items to our families. The Family Support Center has been able to coordinate the efforts needed to make both of these initiatives a success. And our efforts actually caught the attention of a reporter from Spectrum Cable News, thanks due in part to one of our own teachers, Beth Pistadi. I'd like to show you a very brief two-and-a-half-minute piece that was broadcast in March of this year from Spectrum Cable News.
Last clip.
Tucked away inside a small room at Niagara Weefield High School.
So we've got a variety of fruits and vegetables.
Social worker Kara Kirk takes a look at what's in stock on the shelves.
We are able to buy dairy items, juice boxes.
For a few months now, they've been operating a food pantry to help serve people in the district.
It's becoming more and more evident that families are struggling to make ends meet, and sometimes you don't make choices on what you can afford to buy.
The school district, where about 37% of kids live in poverty, partnered with Feed More Western New York to open the food pantry. It's available to any families in need, whether they reach out on their own or get referred by school counselors or staff.
We can provide some of the non-perishable items so they can use their money to buy fresh foods or to supplement with meats and refrigerated products. And I think we're really helping families stretch that dollar and make a difference.
A group of life skills students also helps unload and stock the shelves when deliveries come in.
They have really helped make the food pantry look nice and neat and keep it well stocked, looking at things like expiration dates, making sure that items aren't damaged, and just keeping it nice and organized.
The food pantry is just part of a larger effort in the school to make sure students and families have what they need. The Family Support Center also provides a caring closet filled with hygiene products donated by teachers and the United Way.
Families can spend that money on their bills, on groceries, on clothing, and we can help kind of, you know, meet them in the middle with some help here. We're glad to do that.
The Family Support Center also helps connect folks to a variety of services like mental health and substance abuse counseling, parenting support, housing and clothing needs, and more.
We really try to address basic needs for families as well as social, emotional needs for families and for kids as well.
The district was able to use some of its pandemic restoration funds to get the support center up and running, becoming a place to turn to at the center of the community.
We certainly knew that, you know, especially with the pandemic.
We certainly knew that, you know, especially with the pandemic, that so many of our families were struggling, that we needed to uh do something to help sustain uh growth in that area.
Kids are spending the majority of their day, you know, in our care and we want to have strong relationships with our families. We want them to feel comfortable coming into our schools or picking up the phone and calling and saying, hey, I need some help, you know, can you help me out?
Taking care of the whole student and the whole family. Andy Young, Spectrum News.
Thank you. The response to that news piece has been has been wonderful and led to some unexpected generosity. I've received lots of calls and emails from community members, parents, uh people asking, how can I help? I didn't realize there was such a need in our district. What can I do? So that has led to some some wonderful donations. And as of this morning, actually, we received another donation totaling over five thousand dollars that we have received so far this school year. And donations from organizations, from individuals, from parents, from community members, from friends of friends, people who have um employees here in the district and, you know, wanted to help. And it's been really overwhelming. Um, a very significant donation came from NW Parents Krista and Mike Ziegler. The Ziegler saw the piece on Spectrum Cable, contacted me, came in and took a little tour of our caring closet, our family support center, our food pantry. And decided that they wanted to make a contribution in memory of their son Mikey Ziegler, who lost his life in twenty nineteen. We have been so overwhelmed with their generosity and their passion to helping our families. Um, and because of this, the Teachers Association has supported plans to rename our food pantry. So we are now officially called the Falcon Forty Two Food Mart, as forty two was Mikey's number when he was an athlete here at Niagara We Field. So we're very honored to dedicate our food pantry in his honor and in his memory. We're certainly grateful for all of the donations that have come in and for the Ziegler's passion for our projects. So we're really proud of it. So we're using those monies to supplement our items, to buy things that we don't normally receive through donations. Special requests from families who might have a special need or things that that we just need to to fulfill. The need is always there. I think it's gonna continue to be there and we're really, really lucky to have such support from the community. So thank you. I wanted to provide that update. Does anyone have any questions or comments for me before we close out? Thank you. Great. Thanks very much. Thanks for your support.
Before we get into the safety presentation, um I do have one more um congratulations tonight. If Liz Carrery could come back up, please. For those that don't know, um Liz Carrery um was honored this year. She received the Niagara University Caritas Medal um in May of twenty twenty two. She has also been the Niagara County Community College Twenty Twenty One Distinguished Alumni Award winner and the Niagara University Educational Leader of the Year in two thousand and fifteen. Congratulations to Liz Carrery, who has spent over three decades as an educator and head administrator of the Tuscarora Indian School. Under her leadership, the school has created a dynamic after school study club and evening skills class for middle and high school students and members of the community and a summer program for children. Ms. Carrery has also overseen the hire of dedicated homeschool liaison and the creation of the Tuscarora School Newsroom Newsroom. Where students gain hands-on experience in news media and communication. She also spearheaded crucial technology initiatives and launched an early morning yoga class at the school. Where she has led elementary and middle school students in best practices of mindful breathing, stretching and mental grounding. For those, um, Mr. Seriani and I who have taken part, um, stretched ligaments aren't on there, but that's also part of it. Uh, for over twenty years, Ms. Carrery has been an avid supporter of the Tuscarora Culture and Language Program, which is a vital part of the cultural revitalization revitalization of Tuscarora. She also serves as co-chair of the Native American Regional Forum, which addresses issues in the Native American educational system. Congratulations. Mr. Stack, you can join me here if you'd like to ask a few slides. Well, I'll try to go through this quickly because many of you have seen it. Uh, we actually sent out a video um as as a district safety update update. But I certainly wanted to give people an opportunity uh to to ask any questions they might have. I I think first and foremost, I want people in our school community to understand that um school safety isn't something that. We think about when horrific things happen. It's something we think about all the time. Um, we have dedicated us a dedicated school safety committee that spends um hours meeting annually to deal with issues. Um, hopefully before they ever become problems for our district and it is our number one priority. I said this on the video, but I can't say it enough. Our local law enforcement have been awesome. The Lewiston Police Department, the Niagara Sheriff's Office, New York State Police have been so present in our buildings um through the last few weeks. We can't thank them enough. It certainly provides a a sense of um security. It takes away some of the tension and concern that people have, knowing that they're here for us all the time. The um, well, I'm gonna go through just very quickly uh some of the safety improvements and protocols, but understand that's a collaborative effort. Okay, there's a lot of people involved. And yes, this is a perfect time to leave right now, if you know all this stuff, absolutely. Don't, if you if you're still sitting there, it's okay. You can get up and I won't, I won't even look. Absolutely. District-wide safety drills and trainings. Um, a- as a district now, we've cycled through every single school in our district. Having um a a high level safety drill and active shooter drill. This year it was Tuscarora and Colonial Village. In the prior years, it was the other four buildings. Next year, we'll cycle back to the high school, middle school. This is really important for our district, but it's also really important for law enforcement, for all of the emergency services that would respond, that come and take part in these in these drills. Um, it gives them a better understanding of our of our buildings, the layout, um and it's good training for them as well. We also have building-based tabletops. Um, each year we make sure that our staff have some training in that in that regard. We also um had training for all of our staff and staff lead training. Each year, we're required to go through shelter and place lockout lockdown evacuation drills. And also bus bus safety training and drills are part of our annual trainings. Our administrative team has gone through crime scene management training, um and also two rounds of incident command training over the past six years. The um district is very fortunate to be directly connected to um Niagara County Emergency Services through radio. Uh, as you know, there's parts of our district that sometimes there's cell phone interruption or difficulty. Depending on where you are in a building, we uh just the district leaders all have radios that connect directly um to our nine one one call center. Oops. In our capital projects over the last five, six years, we've really worked on hardening our points of entry. As you probably know, we have one point of entry um in every building once a school day starts. It's really important. We've also increased the number of cameras. As you, as you look at these doors, uh you can see the number forty nine on that door. That's really important for uh emergency services, law enforcement, if they have to come to our building. And we've also um endeavored um in having weapons detection systems in place next year in two of our buildings. And we'll be talking, I'm sure, about about the other buildings. Okay? This is, this is a highly advanced system. It's not your typical walk through a metal detector because you have and you have a nickel in your pocket and it goes off. Okay, this will actually find images of weapons that individuals might be bringing into our buildings. For those that don't know, uh we are always in lockout. Once our school day starts, all of our doors and all of our buildings are locked and you actually have to be buzzed in to be let in. For those, again, that aren't aware, who haven't been to our buildings, don't visit the buildings, you don't just walk into a school building anymore. It's unfortunate. Years ago, you did. Um, you don't do that anymore. So that's been out in New York State for a long time. Since I've been an administrator, there's a, there's been, um, we've lived under lockout, okay, once the school day starts. Mr. Stack.
We're certainly very aware at the district of uh the social emotional, there are the social emotional toll that uh. Some of these horrific events have taken not only on our students, certainly for our staff over the last few years, let alone the pandemic. Um, we wanted to make sure that we offer our staff a very good uh array of uh professional development, working with Horizon and Compear on mental health, uh first aid training. Uh, the NW Cares Program has been a national network of support that we've worked exclusively with Dr. Tonoma and his representatives on. Um, as many of us know, uh that work in the field or even those of us that have had to take advantage of of some, some of the systems that are countywide uh or statewide. There are long wait times often to see professionals. Uh, the NW Cares Network does provide us instantaneous um abilities to reach people through Zoom. Um, through phone and that has proven to be somewhat uh very helpful in a time of need for us. And we are looking forward to expanding that partnership and potentially even reaching our students with that. Uh, also, we're bolstering our EAP resources for our staff, our employee uh resources that are both localized at the Western New York level as well as national networks, as I already stated. Certainly, uh, working with ITIC has allowed us to provide staff some additional trainings in creating um external and internal professional develop op- development opportunities for staff. In dealing with students in crisis as well as um mindfulness and other activities such as that. Last uh fall, the board heard a presentation on the K to twelve district counseling plan that was a comprehensive plan revamped to address some of the largest issues that we have. Uh, in the district and uh I'm very proud that the council team, social workers have worked to establish that plan. Uh, this past superintendent conference day in March, we were able to do a poverty simulation. You heard on the Spectrum news piece that there is a thirty seven percent or approximately thirty seven percent poverty rate. Um, Epic ran every, every person influences children's, the name of the group Epic. They came in with our staff on the superintendent conference day and they were able to provide a very powerful simulation for our staff as to what it's like to live day in and day out uh in in lens of poverty. Other trainings for our students, we certainly have worked extensively with mental health advocates in Western New York uh to bring some programming, both to the middle school and the high school. As well as Horizon, as I already mentioned, Marissa Vuich at CV, Edwardtown Middle School, Niagara We Field High School have all worked extensively with Gately Longview to be brain therapy and mobile counseling labs directly here to our students. Also, North Point Council has really increased their footprint, not only with our EAP, as I mentioned in the previous slide, but also in working with substance abuse and vape education and prevention. Uh, counseling for our students. Also, it's been very helpful uh as we brought in through pandemic restoration, an additional counselor at the high school. Cause that additional counselor and some of our additional social workers have really been able to work exclusively on instructional lessons in the classroom for our students. Things such as communication skills, role playing, building resiliency and other character traits. So we're proud of that. Uh Kara Kirk, who I believe has left, but um, you know, we already talked extensively about the family sports center. It's just had a tremendous impact on our school community. We're so proud of that. And I'm looking forward to presenting to a larger group of uh school leaders in Western New York on Friday morning in regards to some of the work that we've done with Family Support Center and our other supports. Um, as I mentioned, we do have um two counselors that have been added as well as one and a half social workers to our school community. That has been a tremendous impact for our students, especially coming off the throes of the pandemic and some of the social emotional struggles that uh that our our students are experiencing and and families. Um, on the opening superintendent conference days uh this year, we have internally trained uh Mr. Jeff Hess. You might remember that presentation earlier this fall in crisis prevention uh training and interventions. And CPI has been a wonderful addition for our staff and will continue that as we get into the next school year. Um, I really appreciate the leadership of our building principals and all of our buildings and and the establishment, um whether it's leader and me training or PBIS and other character education traits. They really are doing a nice job of promoting those uh pieces into their school for our students and their benefit. And this was just the end of the presentation that we had the other day. Does anybody have any questions on the social emotional supports and otherwise? Thank you. I will now move on to uh the privilege of the floor. Any person who wishes to address the board is invited to do so at this time. Please state your name and address. Complaints or criticisms about individual school personnel are not appropriate in this forum will not be allowed. The board may not respond to questions. They should be referred to the superintendent of schools at another time and please leave your comments to three minutes. Billy?
Good evening, Superintendent, Assistant Superintendent, respected board members. Some of you may know me in a different role for Niagara County, but tonight I stand before you as a parent of a Niagara We Field High School senior. My daughter was devastated to recently learn of the administrative leave that high school physical education teacher Kevin Cheesely had been placed on. I have obviously taught my daughters to stand up for what is right in this world and to never be afraid to speak up in the face of adversity. She has expressed her concern and advocacy for Mr. Cheesely in a letter that she has given to each some of you that are present here tonight. I also have a copy for each of you to read to see this absence of a phenomenal teacher through the eyes of a soon to be graduate of NW. I I stand in support of my daughter and the more than twelve hundred people who have signed a petition found at change.org to plead for the reinstatement of Mr. Cheesely. In a world of so much recent loss and change, Mr. Cheesely was the teacher that brought joy to so many of the high school students, past and present. He took the time to really see each student and get to know them. He was a teacher that went beyond his responsibilities of a teacher and extended himself outside the classroom to support students. His positive impact on students cannot be replaced. I urge you to reconsider Mr. Cheesely's Mr. reinstatement, so my daughter and the twenty twenty two graduating seniors can have a teacher that has made such a difference in their high school experience. Present in their last days at NW. In closing, I ask each of you to look back and remember the one high school teacher that to this day you remember so vividly and fondly. Because of the extra effort they made to help you grow into the person you are today. That teacher is Mr. Cheesely to so many of the students, including my daughter. Thank you.
Kristen? Chelsea?
Good evening. I'm Chelsea Bager. Um, I am a parent of two students that go to West Street Elementary School. Um, I actually am here to discuss a little bit about the safety of the students to kind of add on to what they already spoke about. Um, I did talk to Michael Lee actually last week a little bit about the exterior of the school. Um, that's not a general concern of mine. I actually do have a lot of confidence in everything that you talked about. But mine is more about the mental health of the students. So to add on to what you already said, I believe that more mental health needs to be addressed to elementary students as well. Because of their young age, they're very impressionable. And so, starting within, I think that every child should receive a seasonal mental health screening. And this would be the mental protection of them and other students. So any self-harm abuse is a child eating at home, self-harm to themselves or others needs to be addressed. So there's obvious costs involved with that because the guidance counselors, that's you'd have to hire another guidance counselor to perform that. So I, we could outsource to SUNY schools and receive an unofficial evaluation of the students. Um, and then when they get that unofficial evaluation, they can be pushed onto a certified professional if deemed needed. So at UB, they have a counseling master's program um that they actually out they need, they have over a hundred school counseling and internship internship sites available in placement already. And I didn't know if we are on that list for them already for to be available or if we should get on that list. That was basically what I wanted to bring to the table. Thank you.
Thank you. Just so you know, is is Kristen here? She had signed up. Okay. Alright, we'll move on to the consensus agenda items. A call for motion to accept the consensus agenda as submitted. It's been moving second at any item to separate or discuss. Uh, just a piece to to point out, uh, we do have to pick an actual date for the reorganization meeting for item seven.
Uh, just a piece to, to point out, uh, we do have to pick an actual date for the reorganization meeting for item seven. The reorg meeting, um, it's item seven, not on the seventh. I think one was this, was it the sixth, six? Yeah.
Six or the thirteen.
Yeah. Um, I mean, I, I'm game for the six. Just get right away out of the, beginning of the month. Okay. Go, and he's be sworn in, so he wouldn't, he'd have to be the sixth then, yeah. All right, we'll make it the sixth. We'll have the reorg at six, followed by the regular meeting at seven. So please, uh, just make an amendment on number seven to reflect that. Any other items? All, all those in favor then, please say aye. Aye. Those abstaining, motion carries. I like to call for motion to accept the personnel items as submitted.
I'll make the motion.
I'll second it. Anything to separate or discuss? You sure, Tom? I'm just, I, I know you've messed up telling me to, yeah, yeah. All right, then, all those in favor, please say aye. Aye. Those abstaining, motion carries. That's why I congratulate everyone on, on the appointment of tenure or their retirement in that, uh, that list, like. All right, a policy committee.
So we had a meeting uh, this evening and went over three of our four policies. We are tabling, I believe, all of them, correct? Yes. So um, they will be discussed again at our future meeting, which we have not set the date for yet. Yeah. So I have nothing to report.
All right. I would have had to read it anyway. Um. All right, uh, ex-official student members report.
I just wanted to say my normal spiel with uh, just updates on everything that's going on in the district. Uh, the volleyball tournament was a very big success. I have to say our team had a great costume. We did win, got stress. Um, also, the um, family movie night that we had with Encanto was amazing. I, the kids were absolutely adorable and I think it was a huge success. Uh, otherwise, pretty much just senior activities are going on in the next couple of weeks. Everything, uh, final exams are winding down and um, yeah, that's just about it for school-wide. Uh, I would just like to say that this has been an amazing opportunity and has given me a completely new perspective on education. And I am so grateful that I've been able to just spend, put in a different pair of shoes and be able to see, like, from a student's perspective is one thing, but being able to see what educators and all the adults in the district are to making um, the education system so impactful is very important. I will cherish this for how long.
Just a quick question. Do you have any report on the superintendent's performance in the volleyball tournament? Just curious.
I do have to say, it was pretty entertaining to watch. No, I, there was a lot of the administrative staff. I just know that we had uh, that much athleticism.
Whoa, wait, wait, wait.
Thank you. To use the word athleticism, that's so great. Thank you, Annie.
Wow.
I'll say extra nice things on the next presentation next week because of that.
Oh, wow, that's. All right, well, we'll, we'll move to Mr. Athletic then.
Yeah, you just gave him more. Actually, he's gonna use that as fodder.
Oh, yeah. Oh, definitely.
You know, being able to present to Annie earlier and just congratulate her on such a great job. It, it, so many times I've come to talk about some of the things that are student-related and Annie's been the one to talk about. It's great that she's been ahead of me, um, cause I was gonna comment on how well, um, our students handled um, the volleyball tournament. It was so smooth. It was so well-run by the staff. But the, the, the students were, it was so well-behaved, picked up everything. And I got comments from our cleaning staff about how amazing the gymnasium looked. You know, obviously, you know, it was very hot that afternoon, everybody was water bottles. They said they picked everything up. I mean, it was just such a, such a great testament to our, to our student body. And, and then after that, um, you know, when a number of adults came to listen to many kids sing the Encanto songs, um, Annie was there as well, giving up, um, her Friday evening to, um, you know, join the kids and help supervise. So, um, you've really just been, been awesome all year. So thanks. I, I do wanna just comment briefly, uh, the, um, you know, horrific school shooting in Texas. As a district leader, um, you know, my condolences go out to all of the, the victims, the families, the friends, the individuals, so their lives will never be the same um, because one individual, um, decided to, um, murder, um, all of those very innocent people. And, um, for our students here, we know that when those type of events happen, we reach out to kids, um, who might need additional support, who have been through traumatic, uh, events themselves. Our counselors reconnect, our teachers talk about these topics in class that, and then also check on students to see how they're doing. It's, it's a real community effort. I, I understand and, eh, better than ever, you know, the last few years, the need for, um, additional mental health supports. We've certainly put many of those in place. As Mr. Stack, you know, was able to allude to. And, and one of the really neat things about this generation of, of, of student is that they are more willing than ever to take people up on that. And, you know, a lot of the stigma attached to receiving help or getting counseling supports, um, it's fun to the wayside, and I think we need to continue to work in that area. But, you know, we have many students who talk very openly about receiving support. They receive support here. They receive support outside of here. Um, I would say that it's never enough until every student who needs it is receiving it. But, um, you know, I'm, I'm, I'm proud of the, the, uh, supports that we've put in place for kids. But we were always looking to buy more to our families. If you know of, uh, of a child, whether it's yours or someone else's who might be needing support, reach out, please, and contact us because we'll put somebody in contact with them. And that'll, that can be within our school system, but it also can be with some of the wraparound services, services that, um, uh, Kara talked about earlier today. The, uh, la- last thing I have is this, um, food service still free breakfast and lunch until the end of the year. There has been no updates on that that I've seen. Um, if so, if that does happen, I'll certainly share out. Thank you.
Any questions in the superintendent's report? All right, um, I just for board discussion. Uh, we, the one that I had, I, we already did was the date for the reorg meeting. So that's all taken care of already. Um, and we'll have a calendar coming out. Is it next meeting for the, the project, projected dates then?
We, we share a draft, we'll bring, we'll bring it back. We can talk about it, I think, at the next meeting. Okay, and then at the reorg.
John will be running next meeting, um, cause it's the night of the track banquet and I have to, to be at the track banquet, so. It's not a track meet this time, it's a track banquet. Yeah, oh, that's, that's great, great. And it's, I'm evaluating his athletic ability. Um, all right, so, a few things, uh, obviously, you know, I, and I've gotten a lot of calls from people with, with school safety and the way our, our district is handling things. And, um, one of the things I wanted to bring up for board discussion, I, we have the health and safety committee, that's the building level and district level, that level. We used to have one when I first got on the board, um, at, at the board level. So it'd be sort of like the, uh, policy committee or the, um, where we had, it was able to have co- three board members, three members of the public, so we were able to talk about that. And we had talked back then about actually forming it where we had three board members, but we also had a representative, a parent representative for each building serving on it. So you had more of a, of more of a dialogue about safety issues and stuff in the building. Um, I think it wouldn't be a bad idea to start maybe taking a look at that again for next, the next term. Yeah, so it's, it's, it's not, with, with the one inside the school, I mean, obviously, we, we talked about this, we, we don't really have parent reps on there cause we don't wanna share our s- security plans out with the public, cause then it no longer becomes a security plan. Um, but this would allow us to have more of an open dialogue of issues that d- that do come up and um, and have a, have a conversation from the, from the building level of that.
If, if it's something you end up wanting to do, my, my recommendation would be this, can you plan them maybe quarterly right before um, the district safety committee meetings?
Yeah.
So that, you know, issues and concerns that you might have, we can take from there and then take them to the district safety committee.
I agree. So what I'm gonna do at the reorg meeting is that's gonna be one of the, the committees that we'll have for that. Um, we'll just need the policy, um, the, the policy to, you know, add that to that for our number of meetings that are there, committees that are there.
Now, Steve, is this gonna be just a discussion or is it possible that it can, something can be resolved?
Well, it, what it does is, as Dan said, it, it's a discussion piece, but those items then, instead of coming to us, they go to the di- district safety committee. That does, or whose report and, and recommendations do come to us. So, but it does, it gives, it leaves an o- more of an open forum to parents, uh, in that regard. Um, because there would be public meetings, so there'd be more parents that, if they wanted to come talk at that time, they could. So, and, and actually Darren, we talked about a while ago, bring that back in, and we just never got around to doing that piece, so.
Well, I have an interest in that.
Okay. Well, I, I would be too. That's one of the things I would do, but we, we'll talk about that, the reorg. We'll get to that point, so. Um, any other items for board discussion? Any old business? Any new business? Um, just want, uh, Chelsea, I know that you, you presented that, what I'm gonna have to do, have is a superintendent reach out to you. Have a little bit more conversation with that, with, about that, that way, and he can maybe bring up to speed with some of their contacts that we have had with, uh, with similar, um, services. So. Um, and if you're interested in that committee, I'll be requesting, you know, so. All right, uh, public comments. Anyone, you know, uh, any public comments at this time? Uh, Nora? Fair and left, I have to pick out someone. So, all right, um, board member comments.
Yeah, I'd just like to congratulate all the people with tenure and the retirements and thank them for everything they have done and will do. Thank you.
I concur, Rick. I, you, you know, obviously, it, this is one of those meetings as, as a board member, you, you, I, it's like bittersweet. You look forward to it cause you're celebrating these new teachers who are now going to be, you know, lifelong members of our, our Falcon community. Um, but at the same time, hey, to say this, it's like we're pushing the others out the door while the new ones are coming in at the same meeting. Um, but it, you know, for the, the eleven years I've been, you know, here on the board, I, I've seen many of them come to meetings and present, that's stuff that they do in their classes and in their schools. Um, it, it's just, it's, it's always bittersweet and, uh, it's, it's fantastic though to see that the, we have such a, a younger crowd coming up to take over, um, and fill those, fill those footsteps. And then we'll be having even more with the, to replace them with the new hires when we, in, in the next couple of months, so. Um, another exciting piece coming up. Um, I also wanna thank the superintendent and his staff and, um, the, obviously, all the principals, the teachers, uh, support staff, bus drivers. Um, and just for, a- after all of the stuff that went on Buffalo and down in Texas, I know parents are always concerned about the safety of their children and what's, what, what's going on in the schools uh, for our practices and, and how are we keeping our kids safe? And our, I wanna say our entire district stepped up to make sure that our policies and our practices have been followed. And, you know, everything, uh, it, it just top-notch. I stood out one morning with the superintendent. Um, I made sure he didn't hold up traffic this time while he was standing out there. And just, you know, the, the presence that was there between them and the Lewiston Police Department, um, you know, you, you really could feel a calm with the parents coming and dropping their children off throughout the district. So thank you for everyone that, that really um, stepped up to really put forth that effort this, this past couple of weeks. Uh, any other board member comments? All right, I'd entertain a motion. Oh, no, it's not. We have to, I'd like to call for a motion to enter executive session for the purpose of discussing matters of current litigation, collective negotiations, and the employment of particular persons. All those in favor, please say aye. Aye. Those abstaining, for an executive. Thank you, everyone.